I would simply ask that everybody observe the next sixty seconds in silence reflecting whatever way you feel best.
Wes.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Stube. Moving on, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Krampsey?
Here.
Ms. Fulham-Winston?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Landis?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Ms. Stewie?
Here.
Ms. Domain?
Here.
Mr. Spear?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is opportunity for citizens to be heard. We don't have any scheduled citizens to hear from tonight, so I will throw it to our audience, either live or for Hall or here with us on the call. If you have any issue you would like to address Borough Council about concerning local government here.
I'd like to show a video. That was submitted. I'm gonna share your screen if that's all right.
Sure.
Welcome to my computer.
Hello, my name is Sarah Markwitz and I live at 137 F Street here in Carlisle. I serve as the team lead of the community engagement team of the Carlisle Climate Action Commission and also work at Dickinson College as the program coordinator for the Clark Forum for Contemporary Issues. I apologize that I am not able to attend this meeting in person tonight as at the time of this meeting, I will be overseeing the livestream of a Clark Forum event. I am making this video to express my support for the resolution calling on the Carlisle Borough to instate a living land acknowledgement to honor the Indigenous communities of the Carlisle area and the children of the Carlisle Indian Industrial School. At Dickinson, the practice of a land acknowledgement is commonplace before many in-person and virtual events. This practice is something that I commit the community engagement team to start our meetings with moving forward. It is important for us as stewards of the earth to honor those tribes and peoples who inhabited, cultivated, and thrived on this land centuries before colonizers arrived. And with that arrival, where Indigenous peoples were expelled from this land and subjected to centuries of displacement, genocide, and forced assimilation. The environmental crisis that we now face is inextricably linked with this history of oppression of Indigenous cultures whose ways of life and practices had honored the earth. Research has shown that Black, Indigenous, and people of color are disproportionately affected by climate change and environmental injustices such as increased pollution or degraded water quality. Recognizing and remembering these historical truths and acknowledging the continued oppression of Indigenous peoples in this country, no matter how hard or atrocious, is an important step towards a more inclusive, equitable, and just community here in Carlisle and for our whole country. I urge the Carlisle Borough to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you all for listening to that. And just per regulation, my name is S. Farah Domain. I live at 532 West Louden Street in the Borough of Carlisle. And more on that during my update later. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes Farah. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? All right, hearing none, we will go on to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. For council members, is there any item that you would like to consider separately on tonight's consent agenda, which starts the bottom of page one and goes to page two? For those of you playing along at home. Okay, any member of the audience? All right, I'll undertake a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hicks. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And that takes care of every item from bottom of page one to page two. And now moving on to the consent agenda. The, I'm sorry, to the regular agenda, there are no table continued or recurring items this evening. Next up, mayor's report. I have no report, so now we will hear from reports from committees starting with community planning and smart roads.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight. I will make a motion that Borough Council may authorize a borough solicitor to draft an advertising ordinance authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement between the Borough of Carlisle and Shenandoah Cable Television LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Krampsey makes a motion for the Borough to draft an advertising ordinance authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
That ends my report.
Thank you very much. Employee relations, citizen participation. Mr. Stube, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items on the agenda tonight. First though, I want to provide some information on the changes that have been made since last month to the proposed Truth and Reconciliation Commission resolution. There've been a number of changes to both the whereas clauses and the resolved clauses in the resolution itself. And that resolution is available online on the Borough's website if anyone would like to view it. Based on feedback councils received, the draft before us tonight clarifies the work of the proposed commission. The resolution establishes the Carlisle Truth and Reconciliation Commission with the goal of improving racial justice and racial equity within the scope and jurisdiction of the Carlisle Borough Council. As the resolution states, the commission's work will involve examining and documenting policies, practices, and actions by the Borough of Carlisle and the Carlisle Borough Council that have contributed to racial inequity and systemic racism. From there, the commission can provide individuals opportunity to speak their truth in these areas and can identify, analyze, and recommend to council reforms meant to mend the wounds of racial injustice and combat systemic racism. In addition, based on feedback, the resolution now provides a tiered process for beginning the commission's work. First, council will appoint members to the commission. Then, the commission will submit to council its proposed mission statement, bylaws, and action plan. Once this occurs, council and the commission will hold a joint public hearing on the submitted documents. From there, the commission will begin the work of acting on its mission statement and implementing its action plan. This tiered process will provide an extra layer of transparency. Further, it gives the commission, council, and public opportunity to openly discuss and consider the commission's specific aims. Let me be clear, the resolution before us tonight cannot undo over four hundred years of systemic racism. Actions from every level of government made over centuries have led us to where we are. And we, as a local government, are limited in the changes we can make. The Borough of Carlisle cannot and will never be able to undo every instance of racial injustice. But that doesn't mean we can't do our part in acknowledging the hurt that exists. It doesn't mean that we can't act to right the injustices and inequity we have caused. This resolution is only a step in that process, but it's a necessary step. One that will likely lead to difficult and uncomfortable conversations. But we need to have those conversations if we are going to make any form of progress on these issues. The moral arc of the universe only bends toward justice if human beings act offended. It doesn't happen on its own. Change cannot occur without us, as a community, working together to make it happen. So with that, I'll open the floor up to attendees from the public for their comments. And from there, I'll turn things over to council for discussion. Because there are a number of people who have expressed interest in speaking on this topic, I ask that anyone wishing to comment keep their remarks concise, aiming for five minutes or less. In addition, before speaking, please state your name and address for the record. And as, and finally, as a reminder, this is an opportunity for public comment, not for cross-examination. If anyone has any questions they would like further clarification on, I ask you, please contact staff or members of council outside of tonight's meeting. So with that, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. And I will call on you in the order I see your hand raised and then your microphone will be unmuted.
We do have someone here at Borough Hall who would also like to speak.
Okay, that individual can go ahead to the podium and speak since I don't see any hands raised first. So whoever is at Borough Hall, please go ahead and then we'll go to any hands from there.
Hello, Mr. Stube. This is Donnie. And I agree with about seventy percent of what you said. And I'll tell you why only seventy-five, well, about seventy percent. It's finding a way to live together is not about tinkering with just this or that policy or about expanding this or that feature of constitutional law. It's more of an opportunity to reimagine our common future as a people. The issue at stake goes beyond any purely intellectual exercise. The challenge is to redefine what is for not just with a pity plaque or buying out the guilt and glossing over the shame or even flipping a script to fingerpoint a generalized vagueness of what Indigenous cultures being played down as, you know, Indians in our current like state, which is absolutely central to the economic and political future of their identity. You know, it's not just this town, but maybe across boroughs and inspired considering Carlisle embarrassingly was responsible for men like Pratt in the claw Indian school, which was to diminish the culture to emphasize on losing their identity by rebranding into the white man's thinking and system of checks and balances. So this is just the beginning of the long, complicated process of cruelty and oppression. That is all. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could we just get his full name and address? Just to make sure we follow.
My full name is Donnie Martinez and I live on Seventeenth West Pomper Street. Thank you.
Okay, is anybody Borough Hall, please just, I guess, let Stephanie know. And if there's anybody attending virtually, please raise your hand.
Can you hear anything?
So far, no one else has their hand raised. But I believe Tawanda would like to speak. Is that correct?
Okay, Ms. Starworth?
All right, one second. Okay, you can go ahead and unmute your mic.
Can you hear me? Thanks.
Yes.
Mayor Scott, Deputy Mayor Schultz, all my friends on council, good evening. It's good to see you all. Certainly, my position on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission resolution is not a secret. Just wanted to voice that publicly here tonight and also again, thank you all for taking this measure. And I also want to point out that it is a significant measure that our intelligence, our intellect, nor our intentions ought to be confused as doing something that's mundane or something that is glossed over, but rather a rather courageous move, given the state of the country and given the state of the Commonwealth. So again, I thank you all for taking this move. I thank you all for including some language that would speak to the Indigenous peoples, the land acknowledgement piece, for making that part of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission resolution to include a broad scope of work that needs to be done for this community. And again, taking it seriously and not taking this as just going through the motions. So again, I thank you. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thanks. And before you leave the mic, if you could just.
Lower Swatara Township.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this before we move on to council? Okay, seeing as there are no other hands raised, Stephanie, is there anyone else at Borough Hall that?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to comments from council then. If any of my colleagues on council would like to speak on this, please feel free to unmute your mics.
Sure, I'll hop in. Tonight, we vote for a future. We vote to lead our community on a path toward improved equality of opportunity. Equality that can only be built by addressing the racial inequities of the present that are constructed upon the malformations of the past that Counselor Stube mentioned earlier. Humanity and human institutions are imperfect. And through time and effort, we can chisel away at those imperfections to find ourselves nearer the perfection beneath the roughly shaped surface. There will be some who say this is attempt to lay, this is an attempt to lay blame. Such a notion presupposes a conclusion before we avail ourselves of the fact-finding a Truth and Reconciliation Commission can more thoughtfully present. The only blame would lie in continuing to stand idle at the sight of the vast chasms of income, housing, wealth, education, and criminal justice revealed clearly and statistically along racial lines. These disparities are indeed a call to action. We, each of the seven of us on council, and any who wish to lead, we must be servants first. The creation of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission will be an act of service to our community. Through this commission, we will offer ourselves and our community the ability to gain perspectives we might otherwise never have the chance to truly appreciate and process. It will give us the opportunity to examine and where needed, reform institutions, conditions, and laws that may stand as impediments to success. It is our responsibility as individuals in seats of authority, as servant leaders, to take this action and establish the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and allow it to explore the borough landscape for barriers to equitable opportunity for prosperity. The success of each of the members of our community is our collective success. I urge our full-fledged, wholehearted support of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And I will gladly and proudly second Counselor Stube's motion in the coming moments. Thank you.
I want to echo Sean's comments and also that I couldn't be prouder of my colleagues for this action today. Want to especially thank Counselor Stube. Our freshman councilmen have been doing great things lately. Not too long ago, Mr. Krampsey brought us the HRC. So we've been just going like gangbusters here and trying to become the progressive, open community that we were meant to be and that we always were, but we just need a little nudging to get there. So this is finally going to be that truth-telling. And I couldn't be prouder of that. And I also consider this one of the capstones of my time on council as my time is short, as you all know. So I just want to thank Mr. Stube for his leadership, Deputy Mayor Schultz for his leadership, and all the members of the the, yeah, the town hall panel that we bounced this idea off of. Want to thank them for their suggestions and anybody and all that contributed to this. This is going to be your commission. And you should be very proud of that. Thank you.
Just very briefly, I think we, as Americans, are charged to always try to find ways to form a more perfect union. And I see this Truth and Reconciliation Commission as our effort to do precisely that. And I look forward to hearing what our citizens want to tell us and identify the places that we can make things better.
I do want to make sure we thank Counselor Stube again because his work on this, I don't think folks understand how much work he's put into this. He brought it forth quite directly after the town hall meeting and, you know, came up with a base draft. And there were, you know, lots of comments and very thoughtful comments that came through, even folks that had more of a critique. I mean, we did listen and we have read all of them. And Counselor Stube has eight iterations of this throughout this whole time to make it the strong and thoughtful and balanced resolution that we have in front of us right now. And it does have, it is better and stronger because of our residents' comments because it does outline a structure that I think it does make it more effective and and more successful in the long run because we have additional participation. So I just want to say that we do listen to everyone. We have heard your comments. They have, you know, many things have been adjusted in that resolution. So I'm proud that this is coming forward. I'm also proud that, you know, when people say you're, first of all, sometimes we're going too slow. Sometimes we're going too fast and trying to find that middle ground and adjust the right speed and making sure that we're doing it right is critical. We don't want to do things that are going to be jeopardized or be able to be pulled apart later on. So thank you, Counselor Stube. Thank you to all the residents that have brought this, you know, their comments forward. And you're going to have more opportunities before, you know, the work really starts to get going. And in the future, I also am really excited to meet and talk with the folks that would actually be on this commission. So thank you all for all of your input and your incredible work on this.
I'll just, I guess I'll go and piggyback on what Brenda was saying again. You know, thank you, Counselor Stube, Deputy Mayor Schultz, Mayor Scott, and all of my colleagues on council. It's an honor to get to serve with a group like this and to represent our citizens, many of which showed up at that town hall, I guess, over a month ago, to share their stories and share their thoughts and their reactions. And it's been an honor to get to sit back and listen and to hear from folks who are telling, you know, real-life stories and their instances and coming at this from a good place, coming at this from a place of let's work together. Obviously, we need to look back, right, and we need to right our wrongs. But also, let's have an eye looking forward to see where we can make those changes, whether they be policy changes, whether they be zoning changes, housing changes, policing changes, whatever those are. I'm very excited to see this Citizen Commission get started. And I will proudly vote for this because I think it's a good product that came through stakeholder feedback. But I'm very excited to see what comes out of this process. And I'm looking forward to voting on hopefully some proposals as quickly as possible, but as, you know, as thought out and as thorough as those can be. So thank you, Counselor Stube, and thanks everyone on council. This is another example, I think, of the great things that Carlisle does when we all work together, when we listen, and then when we take action after we listen. So thanks.
Okay, I would just, oh, my apologies, Mr. Stube. I just want to echo what Counselor Krampsey just said, that the forming of this commission is a big step forward. It's something that we've needed to do for a long time, but this is just the beginning of the work that has to be done. It's really, truly what happens at the end of this that's going to make the most difference. Because as people in power, it's easy to ask people to contribute, but it's what you do with those contributions that really counts. And I'm very interested to see what the council will be able to do at the end of all of this to show that we do actually listen, that we do actually care, and that we will try to make this community a better place for all.
Okay, if there are no further comments, I will move that Borough Council adopt the resolution establishing the Carlisle Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
Mr. Stube makes a motion to establish the Carlisle Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Do I have a second? Second.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interject. I know this isn't typical protocol for a resolution, but I'd ask that we do a roll call vote on this instead of just a standard voice vote.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Your suggestion is well taken. And Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Krampsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham-Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Stube?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So moving on to the rest of our report then. I do have a few other items, appointments to various existing commissions and boards that we have in the borough. First, I move that Borough Council reappoint Ms. Julie Vastine to a second term on the Planning Commission. This term will become effective immediately and shall expire on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Counselor Stube makes a motion to reappoint Ms. Julie Vastine to the Planning Commission. There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? We're happy to have you back, Ms. Vastine. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Next, I move that Borough Council reappoint Mr. Robert Pennell to a first full term on the Planning Commission. This term will become effective immediately and shall expire on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Stube makes a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Pennell to the Planning Commission. Welcome, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And finally, I move that Borough Council appoint Ms. Wanda Hunter to a first full term on the Human Relations Commission. This term will become effective immediately and shall expire on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Stube makes a motion for an immediate appointment of Ms. Wanda Hunter to the Human Relations Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn things over to Deputy Mayor Schultz, who has one last item he'd like to bring up.
Counsel, I have a bit of a surprise resolution. Stephanie, if you could bring Wanda Hunter on?
She just needs to unmute her mic. She would like to turn her camera on. She can do that too.
Wanda, you with us?
Yes, I am.
Great. Wanda, thank you for, thank you for stepping up on the Human Relations Commission. I understand you have a special occasion coming up at the end of this month. So I'd like to offer the following resolution to Borough Council. This is a resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Carlisle, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, recognizing March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one as Wanda K. Hunter Day in the Borough of Carlisle. Whereas Wanda K. Hunter, a lifelong resident of the Borough of Carlisle, was born in Carlisle Hospital on March twenty-fifth, nineteen forty-one, to Fleete Jordan. Whereas Mrs. Hunter attended Carlisle Public Schools and graduated with honors from Carlisle High School in nineteen fifty-nine. Whereas serving our military as a civilian, Mrs. Hunter's keen attention to detail and administrative acumen garnered great success through the years until her retirement in two thousand three. Whereas Mrs. Hunter also served area residence as legal assistant to the Judge Advocate General of the U.S. Army at Carlisle Barracks and the late John H. Bruges Esquire. Whereas living a life committed to serving her community, Mrs. Hunter served on the Boards of Directors for the James Wilson Safe Harbor, One West Penn, the Ark of Cumberland and Perry Counties Sea Park, initiated one of the area's first Head Start programs, and served as president of the Cumberland Valley Chapter of the American Business Women's Association. Whereas in two thousand nineteen, as if that is not enough yet, Mrs. Hunter's dedication and advocacy earned her the Carlisle YWCA Racial Justice Award. And whereas, as a tireless community service, she currently sits as a commissioner on the Carlisle Human Relations Commission, where she accomplished all the foregoing while remaining a devoted wife to the late Robert D. Hunter and a nurturing mother to her three children. Now, therefore, be it resolved this eleventh day of March two thousand twenty-one that on the occasion of the eightieth birthday of Wanda K. Hunter, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, shall be known as Wanda K. Hunter Day in the Borough of Carlisle. Counsel, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Mr. Schultz makes a motion to adopt this resolution honoring Wanda Hunter in our borough and our community. Fabulous individual and one who's accomplished much, and we're happy to honor her. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brenda Landis. I'm assuming no further discussion is needed.
I think we need more than one day.
You think?
It takes more than a day to state all the wonderful things she's done.
It does. It really does. Point taken, Mr. Hicks. Favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Congratulations, Wanda. Opposed, the ayes have it, motion passes. Congratulations, Wanda.
I'm speechless. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You are quite welcome. And it was a surprise, too. That's even better, right?
Yes. So that's why you were here. I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes our report. I was so busy reading, I didn't get to see the, the look on, on Wanda's face, so I'm glad we recorded this.
We did. It's recorded. You can go back and watch it later. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. All right, moving on to public safety. I move that council authorize the closure of North Pitt Street between I and K Streets on April 20th through the 25th, 2021, June 22nd through the 27th, 2021, and September 28th through October 3rd, 2021, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. daily to facilitate the drop off and pickup of vehicles for Carlisle Events Auto Auctions at the Carlisle Expo Center. Carlisle Events will be responsible for 100% of the variable costs and 10% of the fixed costs incurred by the borough and be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the Borough of Carlisle as the initial insured. The applicant shall be responsible for compliance of any and all applicable COVID-19 precautionary measures at the time of the events. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. This is something that we've routinely done in the past for their auto auctions. Makes it easier and safer for them to move these cars around if we have a few street closures. I think the last time we did this, Madam Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 2018 or 2019? Because I know they didn't do it last year.
Correct. I think it was 2019.
Okay. So there you go. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And finally, I move that council authorize the temporary closing of Cherry Street between West High Street and West Louther Street on May 22nd, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the Dickinson College Baccalaureate. Dickinson College will be responsible 100% of the variable costs and 10% of the fixed costs to hold this event. Applicants shall be responsible for compliance of any and all applicable COVID-19 precautionary measures at the time of the event. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this? This is something we do every year as well for the Dickinson Graduation. All right, hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. And that ends my report. Public Works, Ms. Fulham Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items tonight. The first, I ask Borough Council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 223 of the Code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to the requirements for placement of financial security and payment fees before a utility cut is made within the street.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion to amend ordinance involving financial security before a utility cut is made in the street. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, that's right. Thank you for slowing me down. Secretary, roll call if you please.
Mr. Ramsey.
Aye.
Ms. Fulham Winston.
Aye.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Ms. Landis.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Second, I would ask Borough Council to enter into an engineering services contract with Herbert Roland and Grupic Incorporated to assist the borough with its 2021 sewer system rehabilitation program in the amount of $38,300, subject to the borough solicitor's review and approval.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion for the borough to enter into an engineering services contract with HRG. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. And last but not least, I ask council to approve a resolution amending various street excavation permit fees established in Chapter 120 of the Code of the Borough of Carlisle.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion to approve a resolution to amend our street, our excavation permit fees. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
And that completes my report.
Thank you very much. We're done with the regular agenda. Now it's on to new business. Again, if there's any member of the audience or any council member that would like to bring an item forward, now is the time to do so. Okay. Moving on to reports from council members and staff. I will call on you in order I see you on my screen. So Sean Ramsey, you're first.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a few quick items tonight. I want to echo everyone's statements on, on Ms., Ms. Wanda Hunter. It was, uh, it was great to see in the Zoom box. I'm going to steal this from a tweet I saw from Tammy Git, but I can't wait till we're back in person and I can see you at our Borough Council meetings as one of the strong constituents that keeps us honest in the borough. I, I want to give a shout out tonight to Cumberland County and a bunch of different partners who helped get the, the vaccine site at the Kmart up and running. It looks like by all indications that's going well, and I think that's a great sign of where we're headed. And hopefully, you know, all this good news continues. I see restaurants are starting to put tables out, and I think we're, we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel. I will urge residents, you know, please continue to support our downtown businesses with the weather breaking, you know, eat outside, shop downtown. But also, you know, we're not through this yet, so please still wear a mask, practice social distancing, wash your hands, and do all the, all those things that we've been doing for the past year to get to hopefully a moment where we can get back to some normalcy. And then last, I just want to give a shout out, you know, to our amazing staff and all the great work that they do and, and the group, including Stephanie, that work on our website, making our website more accessible now with, with the language feature for our residents, I think is a, is a great step. And, and the work that you, you all do for these meetings, broadcasting them on Facebook, putting things out on social media. I hope this all continues even post pandemic. When we're back to normal, that we can get the citizen interaction in as many ways as possible. So thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. And speaking of citizen engagement, a new tool is coming very, very soon that will really jumpstart our efforts to be more engaged with citizens. And citizens will be able to respond directly to us, ask questions and propose ideas and projects, which is what I know all of you want to do. So please look for that. It's coming. It's going to be exciting. Steven Spear, Ambassador from the Law School, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have lots of good news and lots of bad news, and it goes up and down for my entire thing here. So I'll just start at the beginning. We started in-person classes a couple of weeks ago for certain select classes, so that's been going very well. The bad news is that as this pandemic continues to go along, we have had a lot of plans canceled, including our barrister's ball, which was supposed to happen in this, this coming May. Unfortunately, that has been canceled due to safety concerns. However, we will be having a drive-in graduation ceremony, so we have that to look forward to. However, the bar exam has been put online. So the bad news continues to roll in. However, I have one more positive to go with that is that Pennsylvania has decided, starting next summer, they will be going to the universal bar exam rather than the Pennsylvania bar exam, which is what every lawyer who has been licensed in Pennsylvania has had to take up until this time. That's a lot of good news for a lot of students. Unfortunately, it doesn't help my class that much, but the coming classes will be allowed to take an exam that everyone else gets to take, and they will have a portable score that will allow them to move from state to state. That also means we will have talented lawyers knocking on the door to come into Pennsylvania and practice here as well. So that is good news for everyone involved. Finally, I have one more event to share with you. We are having a virtual CLE program, which is free to the public and free for attorneys to attend. So if you're looking for CLE credits, that's going to be a great opportunity coming up. It is on March 18th. It is to address victims' rights. The title is "Justice for All: Addressing Systemic Barriers Experienced by Victims of Color and Advocating for Change." It's hosted by Dickinson Law and the Steel Family Leadership Program in Gender and Racial Equity. And as a reminder, that's Thursday, March 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Advanced registration is required, so if you wish to attend that, you must register on our webpage. And that is, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Steven. Mr. Stube.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. You've done enough. Deb Fulham Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to note that this is just about the first anniversary of a group that's been operating since the beginning of the pandemic, referring to itself as Carlisle Can. The group meets every Thursday morning for about an hour, led by Margie Ensign of Dickinson College. It has enabled a massive amount of work to be accomplished in an incredibly short period of time. There's between 40 and 60 people on the call every week, and they represent nonprofit organizations, for-profit organizations, places like the Chamber, the Housing Authority, Carlisle Cares, Project Share, The Borough, the County, lots of people. And we have managed to get folks speaking to each other, breaking down silos, creating new partnerships, and have accomplished a huge amount over the last year in supporting everyone as we've tried to deal with the craziness of the pandemic. And last but not least, next week is St. Patrick's Day, so I wish all of you who celebrate it a very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Deb. Brenda Landis.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. I was going to echo some of the same sentiments of my, my fellow counselors, specifically about, it's been a year, and our staff have been outstanding. I mean, we talked, you know, Counselor Ramsey talked about getting everything online and the transparency and allowing our, our residents to have better connections with us, and that's true. But there's lots of folks that are just out in the community doing the work, and they've, they've moved swiftly. And, you know, people don't always see it, but we see it. And, and we want you to know that, that, that this has been quite a year. And the way that our staff has adapted quickly to, to support businesses, residents, everyone has been inspiring, and I'm in awe of all of you. Additionally, I do want to, I'm on the Cumberland County Planning Commission, too, and, and I'm also working with our Climate Action Commission here. And the county did just put out a Cumberland County Climate Action Plan, and it's a survey. And so I just want to encourage residents to take that. It says it's about seven minutes. I took it today, and it's about that. So that's going to help guide, not just, you know, we're doing things here in Carlisle, but that's also going to help guide the county and planning for that. So I'll put that in the chat. I'm not sure if Stephanie's posted that on her website yet, but, but I do encourage folks to do that. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I walk around my neighborhood, and, you know, I do a lot of kind of grassroots work outside of my borough stuff, and I love a good cleanup, and I love, and it's springtime, and I usually coordinate one. I am going to coordinate a small one, but at the same time, I understand that folks don't always want to still be around other folks. But as you're walking around, I, you know, just look and, look at your neighborhood. And, and, you know, like I said, our staff are doing incredible work, but we can't be everywhere all the time. And some places, you know, we've neglected. And so if you can, you know, help your neighbors or, or see something that needs spruced up a little bit, I think it will, you know, encourage us all to, to just, you know, get out and enjoy our, our walks in our neighborhood and just help one another. I mean, it's been, it's been a long year, so maybe if we can all just sort of, you know, get a little exercise and, you know, see what we can do to, to, to make Carlisle as beautiful and bright and accommodating to all as, as best they can. So I'm going to do it. I'll see you out there.
Thank you, Brenda. Deputy Mayor.
I'll, I'll just note that it's, it's been, it'll be just about a month since the pandemic caused the, the state to be largely shut down. I'm sorry, it'd be just about a year since the pandemic caused the, the state to be shut down. And when I think back to a year ago, the, the anxiety of, of having to teach my, my, my son some of the schoolwork and gaining a better appreciation of, of teachers through that process. Just want to note that, you know, how many hundreds of thousands of Americans we've, we've lost through this. And despite that, we can still feel that there's, there's hope on the horizon with the vaccinations rolling out. We, I'm sure we all feel too slowly, but you see some light at the, at the end of the tunnel. So I'm going to, I'm going to remain my hopeful self, although having lost some family members to this pandemic and, and clients, I'll, I'll be constantly reminded of, of the grief and, and loss that, that so many have, have felt over this past year. I'll, I'll also note, it's, it's a, it's a depressing week that, that we are a little more than a, a year removed from the, the loss in the line of duty of firefighter Jerome Geis. So there are many firefighters who knew Jerome and, and were on that, that scene into the wee hours of that morning, who continue to do their jobs, but have that, that additional burden, especially this time of year, this week. So just keep them, keep them in your thoughts. We can't, we can't give them a hug, give them a socially distanced hug when you, when you see them. Give them a wave. And, and just thank all of our, our first responders for continuing to do what they do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Hicks.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on our, our Climate Action Commission. We, we hit a significant milestone this month with approving what we call our approved pathway. And basically, that's our agreement that we have narrowed the elements per sector that we're going to look to reduce between now and 2050 and now start the, the fun work of doing our cost benefit analysis across the actions under each of those sectors that will get us to our targets. So I'm proud of the pathways and analytics team and, and everybody on, on, across the board, all of our team leaders for, for getting that, that action passed. And much more to come on that in the future. I really want to thank Susan and her team, and just for a little bit of levity on this otherwise somber day. I was, I looked back and asked myself, what was I doing the last time we updated our utility permit fees? I was a second-class midshipman. I wasn't even a full officer in the Navy. And I was just learning about this thing called digital electronics as a struggling second-year electrical engineering student, going, what's digital electronics and what, why are they trying to teach me? It's going nowhere. So that was the last time we updated our utility permit fee, so I love it. Thank you for digging into that, and I think we're, yeah, we're due for another deep dive there. So good, good work, Susan, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Absolutely, Joel. I think I was probably in middle school, so who knows? Okay. Ms. Delmaine, Dickinson College Student Ambassador, you can round us out.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have lots of updates. It is midterms week on campus, so little sleep and lots of stress. But next week is spring break, and the stay-at-home period, once folks are returning from spring break, will happen again, as it happened at the beginning of this semester. So students will not be allowed to leave campus. Once they arrive onto campus, they will be tested and continue to be tested twice a week, as they have been so far. The juniors and seniors are coming back to campus, and no students are allowed to leave campus over spring break. So rest assured that no one is going to a place with lots of other people to have a crazy spring break time and bringing whatever back to Carlisle with them. In mid to late February, an anti-Semitic hate video was released by a Dickinson College student. And I just want to say that genocide is no joke. It is not okay to make any kind of satire or comedy out of the millions of lives that have been lost. And Dickinson College, as well as the Hillel Jewish Center on campus and different Jewish student organizations on campus have released statements, and the conversation continues around that and how to educate and hold folks accountable for that kind of hatred on campus, which is not for that kind of hatred on campus, which is not okay. As we heard earlier, graduation slash baccalaureate will happen mostly virtually in a COVID-safe way. And I just want to echo all of the things mentioned earlier by council members in regards to the incredible work of Counselor Stube with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and for making space in it for including the land acknowledgement, as well as specifically acknowledging indigenous peoples in this area. I really appreciate that and sincerely enjoy and look forward to continuing to work together on that and what the truth and reconciliation can bring forward with that. I also want to thank Vicki Hamel and other folks that I've worked with in the community on this issue and the collaboration that has been able to happen. And just wanted to also make space for Vicki to add a comment on that. I'm not sure if she is still in the Borough Hall, but wanted to offer that, if that is all right.
She is still here.
Awesome. Thank you.
In helping Aspar, I have found many interesting facts about Carlisle.
Vicki, before you continue, please name an address.
I'm sorry. Victoria Hamel, 715 Sherwood Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
With the opening of the Indian School, the schools then closed, and it brought in the 1958 Indian Adoption Project, and that then closed and filed the 1978 Indian Child Welfare Act. The school stays that the Indian Child Welfare Act causes that puts indigenous youth four times more likely to be put into foster care than whites, which shows the assimilation of what the industrial school here in Carlisle did start and the laws that did follow that. I had some tribes of Napi, Makota and Sioux, that reached out to me with ancestor stories. I'll be real quick about Carlisle and the school that Aspar asked me to read. This was one tribal member. "All tribal clothing was stripped of us, and they gave us khaki overalls. We asked, 'When are we going home? What's going on?' So many of us felt our parents abandoned us." This was a granddaughter of a student which gave us a story. Sidney Byrd of the Dakota Tribe said they often would beat us for speaking our own language and had our own beat us. An elder of the Napi tribe spoke of his elders saying, "The government took us far from families, but expected our families to have money to visit us. People that had families visit were scolded if they were caught speaking their native language." "All the records of our missing children are not at the Carlisle School. There are still many missing bodies and artifacts that were taken that we will never get returned." My grandfather, this is from grandson of Joe Riverside, which is a rather famous chief. My grandfather told me, they told students here at Carlisle, "It is a white man's society, and there's no room for barbaric culture. Others would run away and be brought back and beaten. They tell us to ridicule the students and hit them with sticks, brooms, and mops. Some that ran away never came back, and we do not know what happened to them. I've heard stories, but I have no idea of the truth." Another student spoke of, "First, they cut my hair, made me eat soap, and then they beat me for speaking my language. We were given Anglo-Saxon names. Our hair was cut. We were beaten for speaking our native language and often mocked by the locals in the Carlisle area." This is from Chief Water Moon of the Wapamaw tribe up north.
Vicki, how many of these do you have? How many of these do you have? We were trying to do five minutes for people.
I got one, this one. I can just read this one. "Arriving the town of Carlisle, that the white men stood in crowds to stare, heckle, and look in disgust. I was told that women pulled their children close and did not want them near. When the schools closed, my father and native children were adopted into white families, and we were not returned home. This was all a plan by the federal and local governments that took control in Carlisle schools of Renato Lambs and to remove native people off a reservation."
Thank you so much for those, Vicki, and for all of your work and collaboration on this project. We look forward to all of the more stories that will inevitably be brought up in the truth and reconciliation process and how we can work together to instate a living land acknowledgement to continue this well past the work of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and to make these histories visible. And all of that, very important. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
There we go. Thank you, Aspar. And normally now, this is a time when we would turn to staff and ask for their reports, but we're trying something a little different. For the benefit of the public, each of our senior staff members provides counsel with a report of their monthly activities from the month prior. But tonight, I've asked the Borough Manager to survey staff and see if anybody has anything extra they'd like to add to their report. Tonight, we have one such person. That will be our Parks and Rec Director, Andrea Kraus. Exciting information.
Hello, everybody. I have happy news to announce. For the summer, we are going to be opening the Carlisle Community Pool. Yep, we're happy about that. Of course, we'll be following all Department of Health, CDC COVID regulations. But we'll be opening about a week and a half late. We'll be opening on Wednesday, June 9th. And that's, it's kind of a weird day. It's in the middle of the week, but it's actually the first day of school that Carlisle schools are out for the summer. So that's when we'll be opening full-time. Our season pool passes will be on sale starting in April. We are hiring right now, so we have lifeguards and attendant positions open. We hire lifeguards starting at 15 years old, and then attendants are about at 16 or older. And we will also be having a training program, a lifeguard training program at our pool this summer. So if anyone, if you know of anybody or anyone out there knows anyone who's interested in being a lifeguard for the summer, we do have that capability now. The training will probably start in May online, and then they'll get into the pool late in May. So we're happy to be able to offer that this year. It'll help our staffing, for sure.
Thank you. That's good news.
Yeah, that is good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's it for this evening. Earlier this evening, council met in executive session at 6:30. We discussed potential litigation. And with that being said, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.